... or the Sappa Plan as it's known. With us are members of the Sappa Committee, Denise Prowell, who is the Committee Coordinator and Secretary, Don King, who is the City Planner, and also a member of the committee.
Cities Representative.
Cities Representative, and John Early, who is a Committee Member representing Clark's Green.
Clark's Green.
Let me preface this by, maybe I should preface this by saying that at the present time, there is no pending legislation concerning the Sappa Plan. We are merely revisiting something that was presented a number of years ago and gathering information to see if there is interest in the city for a reconsideration of the Sappa Plan. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for inviting us to this caucus. I'm Denise Prowell. I'm not a professional planner. I was the secretary and coordinator, Committee Coordinator. I set the meeting dates for the group and send out emails for the group, et cetera. Don King, the City Planner, and I will go over some things, and John, I asked John to be here in case I would say something, if I would make a mistake, he could jump in and help me out.
Oh, yeah.
And we had some, the person from Dunmore who wanted to be here couldn't be here because of a death in the family, so. And since this is being televised, I would say that anybody from any of the communities, if they hear me say something that doesn't quite ring true for their community, they should let me know, and then I'd pass the information along to you. The people in the communities, the officials have, so many of them have told me that they would, if you ever want to have a larger meeting, Don said that this should be a very small group today, but if you should ever want to have a large meeting, a larger meeting, there are a lot of officials who would love to come and have a dialogue with you. I'm going to say a little bit about how and why the group formed, starting in 2005, and a little bit about comprehensive plans, and then Don will talk about more specifics for Scranton. And I'm going to take 12 minutes on that. I'm going to keep to my time, so, because we want to get to your questions. In the year 2000, the Pennsylvania Legislature passed Acts 67 and 68, making it possible for communities on a voluntary basis to form joint comprehensive plans with their neighboring municipalities, called multi-municipal planning. When a municipality in Pennsylvania does not enter a multi-municipal plan, it must abide by the older Pennsylvania law, which states that each and every municipality, whether urban or rural, must provide slash zone for enough, enough land for each and every type of land use. And I'm saying enough in kind of in quotes, because one planner told me that often it's never enough, and it just gets pushed farther. This is one of the reasons that sprawling development into the countryside and abandonment of existing urban areas has been so pronounced in Pennsylvania, as evidenced by large shopping malls, industrial parks, et cetera, in previously undeveloped areas, competing with cities and long-established boroughs. With multi-municipal planning, existing older urban areas can be designated as targeted growth areas through revitalization, with the goal of helping to regain population in those areas, as well as commercial and employment uses, while helping rural areas to remain rural, if that is their desire. And we do have some communities like that. They want to remain more rural and don't want to compete with the urban areas. Other areas can also be designated as growth areas besides existing urban areas, but Don will, most of the ones in Sappa are existing urban areas. And Don will point out the targeted growth areas in the Sappa Plan. They are targeted for investment, both private and public. In 2005, several small groups of communities in the Abingtons wanted to curb sprawl by working on such plans together. The leadership of the communities gathered for serious discussion about a more effective approach. The idea came up to ask Scranton and perhaps other valley communities about inclusion in the plan. In July 2005, those involved met with the Pennsylvania DCED, that's the agency that works with such planning groups, and the Abington Council of Governments invited all the municipalities in the county to an August 2005 educational meeting with DCED about multi-municipal planning. And DCED was pleased to see the interest from Scranton in joining a planning group. They felt it would be a stronger plan with the city in it. Before that, DCED had seen a lot of, during the last few years, DCED had seen a lot of very small planning groups, two or three townships working together, and it wasn't really creating a very much of an impact on the region. So, and they were listening to some of these rural townships who were saying things like, "It doesn't seem to be a good idea for us to allow for all this land for, say, a commercial district, when we have Clark Summit, you know, right next to us, and other towns down the road that already have downtowns and commercial districts." And so, DCED said, "Well, if you don't want to compete with Clark Summit, you've got to get Clark Summit in the plan." And so then it grew from there. At one point, ransom township considered joining, and then that would have allowed some other valley boroughs to, next to ransom, to be in the plan. But what it ended up as with Scranton in the plan, everybody knew that the big city would be the centerpiece of the plan, and yet the boroughs would still also be, and other commercial areas would still be designated as targeted growth areas.
Yeah, basically, it opened the door to Dunmore, too. Because Dunmore wanted to be in it, but for Scranton, they could not be in it, so.
Yeah.
And they wanted to be designated as a growth area, much like the city.
Also, in 2003, the Brookings Report had recommended that rural or suburban communities and their neighboring cities or, and older boroughs should try to work together on multi-municipal plans. And the Brookings Report, it was about Pennsylvania. It's called Back to Prosperity, and it was done by the Brookings Institution. And it had a lot about how, in order to attract young professionals back to an area, they look for certain quality of life issues, namely, the biggest ones being very, very vibrant urban communities, and also access to undeveloped natural areas. And the Brookings Institution found that the way Pennsylvania had been developing was detrimental to both the urban and the rural areas. And we're actually, in our region, one of the few areas that seems to have a very, very urban places right next to very rural places. So, the thinking was that this would be the perfect region to try something like this, to do a plan like this. In a multi-municipal planning group, participating municipalities must either be contiguous or in the same school district. A participant must also be willing and express interest. Otherwise, it will not participate in the planning, effectively in the planning process. The result of those 2005 meetings was that nine of the Abingtons communities and Scranton wanted to join. No other valley community near to Scranton expressed interest, except Old Forge, which was not contiguous. Sappa was officially formed in January 2006, the Scranton-Abingtons Planning Association, and then Dunmore joined in April of 2006. The groups of municipalities need to be rather small groups, so that representatives can meet and make decisions together around a table, and if the group gets too big, it's even really hard to find a good meeting date, and the staffing gets to be overwhelming. Sappa, with 10 municipalities, is one of the largest of the many multi-municipal planning groups in Pennsylvania. And Sappa was previously 11 communities, but North Abington did not adopt the plan. The city of Lancaster is also part of an 11 municipality group, and also one of the largest in the state. And Williamsport is also part of such a planning group. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit, just general, about comprehensive plan and the Sappa draft land use plan. The Sappa Draft Land Use Plan map, there's a copy up there and in your book, on page 115. It's a comprehensive plan map. And it's also available online at sapaplan.com, and you go to the plan, and then plan mapping. And this map is at the top of the page, and you can zoom in on these maps online. It's a good way to zoom in. Just for people watching this on television, if anybody's going to read the plan from this website, be sure to also read the adjustments to the Sappa Plan, because they'll be, they'll appear in the final plan document. A comprehensive plan is intended to show a general view of what a community's public and officials would ideally like to see in their community in the future. It includes sections on general land use, transportation, historic preservation, environmental protection, and more. A comprehensive plan map has been described as a loose shirt. It fits quite well, but there is wiggle room. The Sappa map is drawn with a broad brush, so it doesn't show relatively small, single land uses, such as one or two existing commercial shops among a generally rural area. Usually, a comprehensive plan's reach exceeds its grasp. It's understood that a community might not be able to achieve everything stated in the comprehensive plan, but nonetheless, the goal is that it represents the community's ideals, so that it can be used as a guide for decision-making. And it also is used as a way to get funding for what you want in your community. Comprehensive plans are cited on grant applications. Comprehensive planning has two separate phases, first planning and then implementation. Sappa hired the firm of McCormick-Taylor to help with the planning phase. The draft land use plan map is the centerpiece of the plan. To come up with this map, the planning team from McCormick-Taylor listened to the Sappa Committee Representatives from each municipality to get an idea of the continuing desires of each community, along with comments by the officials and the public. Each community designed its own part of the plan. To make the draft land use plan map, the planners also studied an existing land use map, the current conditions on the ground, rather than a zoning map. And they referred to maps of natural features, such as steep slopes and flood plains, et cetera. The Sappa Plan looks 20 years into the future. The planning firm, McCormick-Taylor, has stated there is enough, okay, there's enough of each of the uses indicated on the map to last far more than 20 years. And now, I'm going to hand it over to Don. He'll talk about the growth areas and other things.
Well, I just wanted to talk about Scranton. Now, we do have an adopted comprehensive plan that we adopted in March of 93, and that planning effort started in the late 80s. The Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, which is the law in Pennsylvania that allows cities to have zoning, amongst other things, requires that comprehensive plans shall be reviewed at least every 10 years. So, we're a little over the, little over the timeframe there. So, we have a plan put together here with 10 other municipalities that's done. When you look back at our adopted plan and this plan, the goals are pretty much the same, strengthen the neighborhoods, strengthen employment, make Scranton the centerpiece of the region. So, that's...
Yeah, I would say this, from a Scranton point of view, I would say this from a Scranton point of view, that if you, this is a cheap way to get, to meet your obligations for a comprehensive plan. And if you don't, then you're going to have to do one, you know, if you don't want to adopt this, then you're going to have to go back to the drawing board and do one of your own, which would probably be close to a half million.
Well, I said, at least, we spent $100,000 in 93 when we did it.
Yeah, and this was, what, $350,000?
About $300,000, all told, for the Sappa Plan.
So, you have a $300,000 plan that also took advantage of a lot of, hundreds of volunteer hours that went into it, too. Because we spent a lot of, we helped out McCormick-Taylor in doing the plan, so there were some savings in that, that they didn't have to do. And I would also point out that the by-county comprehensive plan that Lackawanna-Luzerne County had entered into assumed Sappa was going to be in place. So, I mean, so a lot of assumptions were built, and one of them was that this would take care of the county's plan. You know, our 40% of Lackawanna County would be, you know, the Sappa, which is about 40% of the county, is going to be placed into the comprehensive plan. And I think this also assumed that this is going to get the city off the hook for having to spend money itself.
Correct.
You know, for its comprehensive plan.
I mean, procedural-wise or law-wise, it kind of kills two birds with one stone. It brings us into compliance with the 10-year, and it also, there's another section that when a county does adopt a comprehensive plan, which Lackawanna County has, the municipal comprehensive plans which are adopted shall generally be consistent with the adopted plan. So, had we, if we adopt this plan, we will be consistent with the county's plan. So, regulatory-wise, we kill two birds with one stone. If the plan is adopted, the next step would be to move into implementation. The main implementation is a new zoning ordinance, or revised zoning ordinance. Again, our zoning ordinance is a little, it's 96, so it's basically, basically 20 years old. There's just a lot of things, dealing with it, every day, something seems to come up that you didn't think about when that ordinance was put together, and things that, you know, we have gas drilling now, we have windmills now. In our downtown, we have a large revitalization going on with downtown living, the buildings being converted into apartments. 20 years ago, if you said that the Connel Building was going to be an apartment building, I would have said, "You're nuts." But it just, the ordinance, it needs to be updated, just to reflect the changing times.
Well, let me see, you correct me if I'm wrong. I think that one of the things as elected officials of Scranton, I think you need to feel comfortable understanding, is that what your zoning is now will not have to be changed to conform with this plan. In other words, you're not being, you know, some of the more unsavory activities that every municipality has to accommodate, whether it's landfills and all these other things. You, you're not being expected to pick up anything more than what you already have. So, I don't want anyone to think that the people in the Abingtons are going to maintain their pristine, you know, vistas, bucolic visions of the future, and you guys are going to be stuck with things that you don't want. What your zoning provides for now complies with this plan. As I said, you're not being dumped on, and I think everyone should understand that. And I'm not always certain that was understood before.
Well, yeah. Well, one of the core values that was agreed upon by the committee at the beginning was that each and every municipality would maintain their own zoning, their own zoning ordinance, their own zoning board, that this wasn't meant to be a cooperative zoning effort. It was a cooperative planning effort. But zoning is something that's unique to each municipality, and each municipality felt strongly, like we do, that that's something we want to maintain in-house. Just looking back to the forward in this plan, maybe says it best. "While the benefits of multi-municipal planning are numerous, prudence dictates that all aspects of this plan need to be fully understood by all participants. Some of the more important aspects of the plan include: The Sappa Plan shall not infringe on any lawful rights granted to any member of municipality that said member retained prior to its participation in the association. All decisions relative to participating in this plan, now and in the future, are the sole dominion of the elected leadership of each member of municipality. Each member community will continue to maintain its own zoning hearing board. Each member community reserve the right to withdraw from the Sappa Plan at any time. The autonomy of each and every member community shall be permanently protected and maintained." And I said, that was, those were things that came out at the very beginning of the meetings that every municipality agreed on and wanted to see happen. Some other benefits that, being a member of a multi-municipal planning association or group gives you points with state on funding.
For grants.
For grants and things like that. That's, I think we covered...
Yeah, your favorite, yeah, your favorite under state law.
Yeah.
It's equivalent of like on the Civil Service Commission test, having a veterans preference. If you check the box, it says you're part of a multi-municipal plan, that gives you points in terms of the scoring.
We want to leave some time for your questions. I think we talked a little longer than we planned.
Okay, you have a couple of very difficult questions. Would the city experience any loss of independence of operation by becoming a member or by joining this association?
What we'd be, if legislation came down, we'd be asking you to adopt the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plans in Pennsylvania really carry no legal weight. There's supposed to be a background document. When you develop your zoning ordinance, your zoning ordinance is the regulatory document, and that would be ours and ours alone.
As I said, prior to the meeting, as we were speaking, someone brought up the one thought of, something like the thought of preventing the TRS from having been approved.
Yeah.
In this plan, can something like that be forced upon?
By adopting the plan, can this be forced upon the city that, okay, you're part of the plan, now you're responsible for...
No. No. The, yeah, the plan, the plan itself raises no legal responsibilities to the city. Anything like that would have to be acted upon by your, by the council, just like it would now, you know. I imagine something like that would be an agreement, and that would have to be agreed to by council and the mayor.
It would have to be agreed to by the municipalities at that time.
Yeah.
Thank you. The second question I had was, what is, what would be the cost to the city in implementation and future operation?
Well, so the only, if we went right out and did a whole new zoning ordinance from scratch, at the, last time I checked, I talked to a couple of consultants, something like that might cost $30,000 or $40,000. But again, it's also something we could do in-house and just make adjustments to our existing ordinance. What we would really like to do is if this was adopted and we go back to DCED and try and get funding, being part of a multi-municipal plan, like we said, makes us a priority level, and they've told us that there'd be some money available for them to help with the implementation.
And you're the only member of municipality that actually has a trained and recognized planner on staff. It will cost more money, I dare say, for the other municipalities than it will cost for Scranton. Other than that, I think the dues were set at about $200 a year.
$200 a year that we use for advertising and things like that for the meetings.
And we do have a rotational system where each municipality is expected to host a meeting once in a while, so that would probably be another responsibility. We were here twice, maybe, during the planning stage.
They were the only questions I had. Mr. Rohit?
Yes, I have a number of questions, and just for the record, I did vote against this plan last time it was up, and I still do have a number of concerns. First, were there any changes made since council last revisit, council last voted on this plan?
No.
So, it's the exact same?
It's the exact same, yeah.
Okay. And regarding the cost, you mentioned $30,000 to $40,000. What would that cost cover? And would that be a one-time cost or...
That would be a one-time cost to hire a consultant to help us draft a new zoning ordinance.
Well, with or without this plan, you'd have to do that.
Yeah, eventually, we're going to have to do it anyway, but that's, that would be, that's the, that's the real implementation cost of the, you do a comprehensive plan, like I said, the regulatory ordinance is the zoning ordinance.
Right. One of the areas in Lackawanna County that seemed to have the most development over the last 10 years was Dixon City. Why isn't Dixon City involved with this plan? Did they opt out, or were they not invited?
They were invited to the initial meetings. All the communities in the county were invited to the initial meetings, and like I said earlier, they, each community has to express interest, since it's a voluntary thing. So, the communities that we got interest from, that's what, who we ended up planning with.
So, I just think, unfortunately, Dixon City has been the hub of commerce, not Scranton over the last 10 years.
And I agree, I would love for them to have been part, but they weren't interested at the time.
Right. It's just a, it seems a rather large omission from the area that they're not part of the plan. Who would make decisions on, say Scranton were to join in with Sappa, if a decision were to be made, who would make the decision? Would it be a governing body, or would Sappa, you know, say if it was an amendment to the map, or any issue within Sappa, would that be done? Would each municipality have one vote on the board, or would it be proportional based on population?
Well, I think it'd be each member municipality has to vote on it. I mean, just like we would be coming to you, asking you to adopt the plan, if we were going to make changes to it, we would be back before council, again, asking them and each of the other governing bodies to act on it.
Right. When we had all these meetings and the give and take that went into making this plan... this plan, we never actually had, you know, a vote of like five to four, or something like that. We always reached consensus, because we always assumed that, you know, that, that if people, if we constructed a plan that didn't meet, you know, the needs of the municipality, that if the municipality identified a problem that they had, we accepted on its face that it was a problem and we needed to respect it. There's never was a time when Don was on the losing side of any vote.
Yeah.
Or any...
Or any, yeah. If there was anything that, you know, if any of the municipalities said, we'd like you to change this for our municipality, it was...
It was done.
That was, that's, it's your municipality, it's your plan, that's what you want, that's what you get.
Right. And you mentioned that the zoning, you know, zoning boards wouldn't lose any power, and Scranton, right now, currently has a pretty good zoning board, a great zoning board, actually. They do an excellent job researching what's going on. If this were to be implemented, if this map were to be implemented, would this have any credence in a zoning hearing at all? If somebody was applying for a variance and it didn't conform with the Sapa map, would that be, could that be used?
No, again, in Pennsylvania, comprehensive plans carry no legal weight. If someone wanted to challenge the whole zoning ordinance, you know, if we did, if we had a zoning ordinance that was totally contrary to the map, somebody might be able to, to make some hay out of it. But technically, in Pennsylvania, a comprehensive plan carries no legal weight. It's a guidance document only.
But you, but you might have a problem that yours is old, you know, and we all had, we all had that problem too.
Right.
So if you had like an attack on your whole zoning law, the first will be, as a matter of fact, their, you know, their comprehensive plan was done in nineteen ninety-three, you know, that was the last millennium.
My concern, and I know the concern of a lot of residents were, when we looked at this a few years ago, was if you look at that map, and you look in the area, you look in Scranton, you see a lot of reds, you see a lot of yellows, high-density residential, and then when you go outside of Scranton, you have areas, you know, you have a lot of recreational areas, green space, things of that nature, and obviously, you know, the, the people that are in those areas wanna keep urban sprawl away, you know, keep certain elements out of their neighborhoods. And I know the concern of a lot of residents and of myself is that, for instance, say somebody wanted to build a housing project in one of those areas that are in green, or a methadone clinic, that they would be told, well, according to this map, that can only be done in, you know, the yellow or darker areas, and that would have to be in Scranton.
Well, again, if, if that was another municipality saying that, all they could do is refer them to us, but they would still be subject to our zoning ordinance.
Right.
So they couldn't do something like that without it being in conformance with our ordinance. But the reason you see those, because we have an infrastructure that was built here that supported a population of a hundred and forty thousand people. Now we're almost getting down to half of that. So we, we wanna have people build in our high-density neighborhoods, you know, where there's, we're going around tearing houses down every year, we need to get back rebuilding and reusing some of those lots. And we have a lot of empty factory spaces, we need to get some industry in there.
Right. And we certainly want development in the city, we just want, want the right kind of development.
Yes.
And, and obviously, my concern is that the officials in these other municipalities would use this plan as a shell for saying, well, we can't allow this in our municipality. You know, they'll say, well, even look at the Sapa plan, it doesn't, you know, it allows for that in Scranton. I guess that's my concern, and that's, that's the hump that I'm trying to get over.
And, you know, could we guarantee that some other municipality might try and say that? Possibly that could happen. But we would still have our own zoning ordinance, and we wouldn't allow something to happen here that wasn't in conformance with our own ordinance.
Right. Well, that's all the questions I have for now. I will review all of this again, and I think one of the issues, and I know Mr. McGough brought this up, was the cost. And, and that, again, that's, that's one of the bigger issues that we have to look at, just to make sure there are no continued costs moving forward. But thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Mr. Wechsler?
Yes, I just wanna follow up on something Councilman Rogan brought up, just for my education. What happens to the Scranton Planning Commission?
Nothing.
It, we still have the Scranton Planning Commission?
We still have, we still have our own Planning Commission.
We still have city planner?
Yes.
And it's, it, it's a recommending body still, but it's operating under the Sapa laws if, if this...
Well, I, we would be operating, we would be using this document as our guidance document, but in all other respects, it would operate the, the same way that it does. The Planning Commission, besides making recommendations to your body on certain things like vacated streets and things, reviews and approve subdivision plans and land development plans, all that would continue just like it does now.
Cause I know a lot of things go from Scranton to Lackawanna County has a planning commission also. Is this another group that would have to be involved in it? Would there be three stages now?
No, no. The, the, the state planning code required a lot of actions. If a city has a comprehensive plan and a county has a comprehensive plan, certain actions have to be referred to both for comment, but that wouldn't apply to Sapa. They wouldn't, that wouldn't be a third layer that you would have to go back to.
The thing that came out of this tonight that I'm more concerned with is the review of the zoning ordinance, more than this plan.
That's, I mean, that's, that's the nitty-gritty.
Having served on a zoning board, I'm quite familiar with it, and there are a lot of cases that either should never be at the zoning board, or a lot of cases that should be at the zoning board.
Right.
That don't happen right now.
Right.
And I agree with Mr. Rogan.
And like I said, more and more of that stuff comes up every day.
I'm more concerned with that than, than this plan.
Yeah.
When the new ordinance would be reviewed, how long is it that, from review to acceptance to implementation?
I'm gonna guess it's gonna be, it would take at least a year to maybe eighteen months. By the time, there's a prescribed set of hearings and things like that, they, they take a while to put together, but a year to eighteen months.
When you go third, all the questions get asked, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. From what I looked at, I guess the previous council had a concern about the financial aspect of this plan. If I'm hearing you correctly, the only money that we would have to put forward is two-hundred dollars a year, am I correct?
I, I think that'd be the only money that we would be required to spend.
Right.
I mean, we would hope to move forward with, with the zoning ordinance, but...
Okay. And from what I understand, from what you just said, we have to update the zoning ordinances anyway, correct?
Well, we have to update the comprehensive plan every ten years, the zoning board, the zoning ordinance needs to be updated. Are we, we're not required by any law to update it, but it, it needs it, cause it's old.
Okay. So we have to update the comprehensive plan. If we were to join Sapa, that would possibly save us five-hundred thousand dollars?
Whatever the possible comprehensive plan would be, I would say at least a hundred.
Okay. And if we don't join, we're gonna have to do the comprehensive plan anyways, and we're gonna have to pay a hundred thousand dollars that we don't have.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Do you think if Scranton were to join Sapa, would it prompt other communities to get involved? Would that spur more interest, or...
Well, I mean, Scranton already has joined Sapa.
Right, but I mean, if we were to...
But I, I'd have to say no. I mean, I think, in the beginning in two thousand and five, when this effort started, and with a lot of work by Denise, there was a lot of outreach to the other municipalities, and the ones that aren't part of the plan just weren't interested. Now, has that changed since then? Maybe, but I haven't heard of it.
I, a, a letter was sent to, to each municipality, and, and we were told, really, do not coax any municipality to be a member of this, because if you have to coax any municipality, it, they're not going to really participate very much. And so one letter was sent out, and the people who came to the, the meeting, the people who showed interest, that's, that's who we planned with. Maybe if, if communities were re-approached, they might be interested, I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay.
The only community that would probably be in this, if given the chance, would've been Old Forge. They were very interested.
Old Forge was interested.
Yeah, but we couldn't, we, they weren't contiguous with anybody. Once ransom booked it and then dropped out.
Right.
There was no, there was no, no one reached Old Forge.
Yeah. The law says they have to be contiguous municipalities.
Okay.
You can't leave a gap in there.
So we, Dumont only got in through the reach from Scranton. No one else touches Dumont, except the city of Scranton.
Okay. And just to clarify, there's no, this plan has no effect on the Planning Commission or the zoning board?
No.
Okay. I appreciate you coming in, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McGough, before we finish, I do have one follow-up. Mr. Gahan asked a good question, and the answer was that, you know, because of joining Sapa, we wouldn't have to revise our own plan. How would Sapa be picking up the cost of that plan? If it would cost the city approximately five-hundred thousand dollars, I would assume it would cost closer to a million to do, for, for this much land.
That's my estimate. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's, it'll be a six-figure number, obviously.
The, the plan is done, though. It's been paid, mostly paid for by D C E D, some grants from the Scranton Area Foundation, the Willery Foundation.
And the Willery Foundation. Also PennDOT.
PennDOT, cause, cause there's a transportation element to it.
And, and the communities themselves.
Yeah, and Scranton's put in, I think, thirty-two...
Thirty-four thousand something.
Again, maybe just clarification, say, so basically, what you're saying is that the Sapa plan would almost be a substitute for...
Right. The comprehensive plan.
The comprehensive plan.
It would, it would be...
So that the planning has already been done, we would merely adapt it to our need, our...
Right. You would basically take it off the shelf and say, this is our plan. And then that will also bring forty percent of Lackawanna County into alignment with the by-county comprehensive plan.
It serves...
Oh, no, that's fine.
Each community, this serves as their comprehensive plan.
Okay, understood. That's...
Yeah, our, our plan was ninety-three, so we were looking to use it up in Clark Screen to satisfy our obligations. Denise, with all the, the matching grants and stuff, what was it, like three-hundred-and-fifty?
It, it was about three-hundred thousand dollars, the, the plan cost about three-hundred thousand dollars, not including the, the Willery Foundation and, and Scranton Area Foundation. They helped the, the communities...
So that's another fifty thousand. So, I mean, so you're talking six figures?
Well, in lieu of, if Scranton were to not join, and instead of going through the process of spending all that money to create our own plan, couldn't we just take this work that was done, chop it off, and edit how we like, and have it for Scranton revised plan? I guess that would be for Mr. King.
I, I, I think we were, I think Cindy Campbell said everyone had to enact the same plan word for word, didn't she?
Um, I, I think he's, you're talking about...
Yeah, I think, I mean, I, I think, I know what you're saying. Can we pull out our, could we, possibly. I mean, a lot of the plan talks about the different municipalities, so there's things that wouldn't make sense for just Scranton, just like there, if Scranton doesn't participate, there's a lot of things in here that doesn't make sense for the, for the rest of the municipalities.
If, if Scranton wasn't in the group with the other communities, the, especially the Abingtons areas, they would be, they would have to redo a plan, and they would have to allow for much more, as I said earlier, the rural areas would have to allow for much more, and you could say, competing development of commercial and office, industrial, et cetera.
Yeah.
Industrial parks, et cetera.
Well, in answer to your question, we kind of asked it in reverse, that after Scranton wasn't interested, could we, like, we asked, could we edit it down and just make it? And the state officials said, you know what, it really was built with all municipalities in line. It was one thing to lose North Abington Township, which is the area up around Lackawanna State Park, but they said to lose Scranton, or Scranton to lose the Abingtons, that was just, you know, bridged too far, as far as I'm concerned.
It couldn't be enacted without the city, couldn't be implemented.
Anything else?
I, I also wanted to say, something, something was asked about the, the future and reviews of developments, and some groups in their implementation phase and in, as, continuing into the future, do have committees that meet, and they review, some, some of, some of them only review large-scale developments. I remember that from the implementation documents that, so they would give their opinion on a, if we organized the implementation that way, they would give their opinion on the, on large-scale developments.
I believe that's all the questions we have, and again, I would, on behalf of council, thank you for your participation in this caucus. We will discuss and we will talk with the members of the administration to see if this is something that we wish to turn into a, a formal resolution for adoption.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
And if, if it did go to next, that next step, I would've anticipated, we'd have to have a few more of these kinds of meetings.
Thank you. Our caucus is adjourned. We will be meeting briefly in council chambers, or clerk's offices.